Backing cards are a little easier.
We're good there, thank you.
Okay, great. Okay, welcome everybody. Let me call to order the Cottonwood Heights Community Development and Renewal Agency. Work session. As Mayor Pottwood Heights, I serve as the Chair for the CDRA with members of the City Council as members of the Board. Our first item of discussion, we are really, really excited to introduce our consultants. MGVA, we had to say plus A or MGVA.
MGV plus A. It's all just people. Yeah, it's Moss, Brass, Bailing and Associates where the original.
Okay, alright, alright.
It's not all about my dad's old red MGV, but if it's MGV.
So, so I, what I want to do first, I'm gonna introduce Greg Bojero, did I say that right? Okay, Bojero, so he's gonna act as the, as team leadership and introduce the team. So let me, if you want Greg, I don't know how you, if you wanna come up front or how we wanna do this, but let's. Come sit at the table and we'll get you going, yeah.
Where would you like me to go, where else? Take the whole half, yeah. He's always shared, all your, this one, who we have. There's enough shared. Yeah, of course. So MGVA, Jay Ballwinkle is on vacation, so he's absent and enjoying the increased water levels in Lake Powell for the, for the week. We'll see what kind of report he comes back with for us on that when he comes back, but. We're really excited to be a part of the team and a part of the project and working and collaborating with you all. As we start to really work towards creating something really exciting at Hillside Plaza. We had this graphic during the, the interview, but we really kind of enjoyed and appreciated the message and felt it was relevant to bring up again. Today was, as we start to look towards creating a, a space for the community. Looking at and introducing the team again, myself, Greg Bojero, Jay absent. Here today, we have with us Lindsay Ferrari and Hillary, Chris Lunds, Tanner and then Alan Clemmons. The rest of the team that will be participating, we've got a, a range of additional consultants that will be able to help participate in key moments. As we work together with the Stakeholder Group and Steering Committee and Jeff. And so. That's kind of us, like, we're really excited to work with you guys and work through the process. We wanted this to be a pretty open discussion today as we talk about. Kind of the next steps as we move forward and, and understand a little bit more about how you'd like to use. The Stakeholder Group and Steering Committee that's being created. Understand a little bit more about that so that as we start to work through public input, we can really. Tailor the schedule and everything to react to those needs of those members and as we understand it right now, there would be 12 people.
So that's where we've landed, but we wanted to get your, your advice and, and you know, what you guys feel. Word, it's not in stone at all, okay?
We, I mean, we read the description, I think it's awesome, I love stakeholder groups, I think it's really helpful to bring them in, you know, right at the beginning and have regular check-ins with them throughout. And I was, Greg and I were talking a lot earlier today, I mean, the way we like to approach is think about the project in, in phases. When, when does the planning team need what kind of input from the public? And so we've identified about three major milestones, you know, with maybe some minor in between. But at each one of those major milestones, you'd wanna meet with this, with your steering committee first. And say, you know, here's the kind of input we're looking for at this, at this stage, where we want to review the past planning, we wanna talk about the vision. What are your high level thoughts about this? And then we would go from the Steering Committee to the general public. And then the same thing, the next phase, which is really starting to look at concepts, you know, several different concepts for the property. Go to Steering Committee, then general public, getting that feedback. That goes back to the planning team and they come up with kind of a final preferred concept when you repeat that same kind of rhythm throughout the project.
Great, and do you, you like the number 12 or?
I think it's great, yeah, and I mean, really 25% of them don't show up at any given time. So I think you need that number to get a good working group. And I like the fact that you've picked two council, two Steering Committee members for each district, I think is perfect. Yeah, I thi- I think it's great.
So you don't see that we would need to divide the group up into subcommittees to tackle, you know, and this is just a possible example. The, you know, let's say residential mixed-use side versus the public space versus the streetscape or, you know, business. You know, somehow, so my concern is that having only 12, especially knowing that the no-show factor on any given, even high level group like that could be 25%. I know I've seen larger numbers in various advisory or steering committees and. That's what I was hoping that you would help all of us to wrap our arms around, will, or do you foresee that? All the 12 people would be deployed against discussing everything together versus breaking into subgroups? Can you help us?
Yeah, I mean, I think you could do it either way, it really depends on how engaged I think this group will be, I mean, you'll, give you, you steering committees and other projects. We have, and have they, you know, so there's, I think you need to decide upfront, do you want this to be a, an advising group or do you want it to be a working group? And the, the people on the committee, if you're going to break up into smaller subcommittees. We need to find people that are really willing to put that time in. And, and even then, I think I would still stick to the 12 and maybe if you've got, you know, a couple that are gonna take the residential issue on. Let's get some other community members to participate in that subgroup with them. And that way you get even more people engaged, you know, depending on their interest. But I, I guess I would just look to you to see if you think these, if we can find the people that are, you know, willing to put in.
But we also don't, oh, sorry.
I was gonna say, one of our thoughts with the, the group of 12 is that there would be some, they would be that network. For those people down underneath there, tiered down.
Yep.
And they would actually have the conversations to bring back to us and you, whoever. So that we're not getting inundated by all sorts of, you know, ideas and plans.
Yeah.
Which would give us a lot more control.
Exactly. And, you know, in my experiences, some of them will do it really effectively and some won't, so we just need to, we need to make sure that we're doing it on our own.
So, so my first impression is the 12 that we pick are going to be really, really engaged, really partners. This, you know, we, we have a, have a, a resident who scheduled a meeting about the product, you know, about the area. 300 people showed up at our community room from all across the entire city, not just the district, and, and that's how much passion existed for. People are so excited, if, if we, I, I really think, and, and tell me if you guys feel differently, the 12 that we picked, I think are going to be really passionate about. Being involved and being there, and, and if, and if we sense maybe that they're not, maybe we make a different choice even, so, so that's my first impression.
I guess you might get it done.
I'm sorry.
Maybe you might, maybe we swap some of it out.
Yeah.
But we'll try to avoid that, yeah.
Well, I think we also are looking, I'd love to hear in your experience, what level of commitment are we asking of that person? Is it a once a month and then 20 hours of homework? If they're fielding several residents, are, I mean, are they expected to collectively meet with other residents? In the interim times between the meetings? I mean, I, you know, I, I, like, I have a couple of people in mind in, in my district, but I, they're asking me what, what level, so.
Maybe what would help is understanding what are we expecting them to deliver to us?
That's right.
What is the final outcome that we're looking for? Cause I, in my mind, I'm guessing, just conceptually, we'd love to see these types of stores, we'd love to see these types of open space. A basic concept that there's some buy-in from the community, is that accurate, not accurate?
Yeah, I mean, I think you want. Let me, let me back up, I've got two thoughts, one is that we usually expect about one meeting a month. And then they're also attending the other kinds of public events that we're having. And, and they're encouraging their, their friends and family members to come to those meetings, so they're. They're ambassadors for the project, they're letting their networks know what's happening and encouraging them to come, to take the survey, to come to the public meetings. To, you know, participate in, in the opportunities. We, I've not been thinking in time-wise in terms of organizing these subcommittees and then creating a whole nother layer of meetings, that's not to say that it can't be done. But that would require, you know, a lot more time on their part. And it might be asking too much.
That would be similar to a steering committee versus an advisory committee, correct?
Yeah, and so which, I mean, that's what you need to decide, do you want an advisory role?
We want more of an advisory than versus a steering committee.
Do you think you do want some, that brings feedback from the public to our meetings and says, here's what I'm hearing about?
Yeah, I, I think the council. It's, it's, we know that, you know, we, we're gonna vote and make decisions, but I mean, I, I want serious input too, I don't want, I don't wanna minimize. Their opinions, I mean, this, this community has invested into it, and so I really want them to feel a part of it, so. All advisory or steering committee is.
That's, that's why I said, I would like, you, you said kind of was your second. Major public thing where you'd have a variety of options out for the public, that's the open house that I really wanna see. Republic come to and say, maybe, you know, maybe if it has a bigger public space, this one's a little smaller, this one has more of this type of retail, this is where some housing may or not. What, you know, but have those options, so then we, because I know if we have that type of an open house, we will get. Hundreds, 200, 300 people come out and express their opinion, and then you can take that back.
Yeah. And what does the planning team think about these working groups and, and what kinds of issues do you think it'd be helpful to engage them around?
I think, I guess my fear of having smaller working groups would be that one group might become very vocal about one topic, it might try to steer the entire project towards that. Similar to when you're having, like, I'll use a art project in Bountiful that we're working on. You had two very vocal groups, there was the pickleball group and there's the skate park group, and like, everybody else kinda got washed in between. And I would worry that if you didn't have like a collective group where they were all one voice kind of hearing the goals of the project and trying to just feed us information to support the project. That you don't get into that finer level of detail where they're like, you know what, like, we really care about, this is an amphitheater. The food truck guys, like, we don't care about that, like, that neighborhood, they are really worried about food trucks and like, we just don't feel the need for that. So I think it would be finding the balance to try to help it be cohesive with the way that they work with us as opposed to them becoming so focused on a thing, yeah.
We could though, I mean, we could ask specific steering committee members or advisory committee members. To, you know, prior to our next meeting, to go out and, and generate feedback on this issue and bring back different perspectives and give, and give a sort of a variety of topics to them. But it is nice to have them all together discussing those things.
Oh, yeah.
So they can kinda hear other viewpoints.
A, a key thing for me about this is that all of us could learn is really what is successful placemaking? I have, I know someone in the, the city south of Toronto, Hamilton. And there is an organization there where there's a woman who has her MBA in, I mean, she has an MBA, she, her whole specialty is in putting on festivals. In placemaking. And she just secured a $70,000 contract with the city of Hamilton to develop their placemaking. Because they're doing it for the whole city. And so we do have an arts council, and I don't know if the arts council has ever been asked to envision the placemaking strategy for Cottonwood Heights. But since the city center will be the anchor and it'll be the inspiration for a number of things, including active transportation and placemaking. I would like you to consult with us and help us to understand, should there be a, an event soon? Where your company puts together something that gives examples of how cities develop placemaking? And of course, again, the city center will be our, kind of our crown jewel, but we typically have done, you know, used parks and. Our middle school auditorium for a lot of, you know, our events and I just wanna make sure we're really thinking about this holistically and. And, and get the highest level of education that all of us that are part of steering this. You know, that we have, that we can unify around what does it mean to, to really do placement?
Yeah. So, and so that kind of input's really helpful, I think what would be good tonight is if we can find out from each of me, what is, what's important about this process? And then we can go away and design something that we feel like will work and come back and present it to you. I think rather than trying to solve it right now and say exactly what we're gonna do. So what I'm hearing is, you, you wanna, you know, holistic approach, you want some creative events that really suss out kind of what's important to residents.
As well as educating them.
And educate.
Showing examples, that's what I'm hearing.
Yeah.
Yeah, because I, I, I think my understanding in.
Educating them on potential.
Yeah, is that, is that people, you know, a lot of people say, well, let's just have it be all open space, green space, well. No, financially, that's not gonna pencil out, and so. And managing all of our expectations, I think, understanding more than just, you know, a few examples of city centers in Bountiful and other places. Maybe look at something like what, what Hamilton, which is a very artistic, you know, I'm not trying to say that we can, yeah, a bigger city, but. Definitely holistic and definitely thinking about how people arrive to the city center. You know, with an emphasis on active transportation as well as people alive in, well, in all mobility modes.
Do you have any thoughts for us as we, as we form this, this steering or advisory committee?
Regarding that, regarding?
No, just, just, just the makeup, as, as we go about that.
Cause I have one thought, would it be helpful for us to write a scope? So that you know what you're, you actually have some talking points to start, would you be willing to make this commitment? This is the things you're gonna be doing and then you're not, everyone's hearing the same thing.
The once a month, the, you know, then.
And how much homework, so what is that all like?
So they know what they're getting into.
Engaging the community, that, that's one expectation.
I guess one question I would have is, seems like people that are most willing to engage in the effort have strong opinions.
Yeah.
And so, you know, ci- city public processes that I've been involved in usually were person the most passionate about any specific thing is the thing, the person's gonna do all the work and. Sometimes they don't represent the community whole. So how do you find the person that's willing to do the work? Engage the community but don't dominate, like Greg mentioned, you know, a specific priority that they have.
And they're unwilling to listen or bend.
Yeah, totally.
Well, maybe that would be in that job description, that so to speak, is are you a collaborator, you know, like?
I think that you're just the part of it, that's why.
Yeah.
You're kind of, you kind of need to know from thing because you think.
Yeah, maybe we report to you and say, the steering committee is working great, we've got these personalities that, or, or we may say, you know, there's two people that are really kinda. Doing some things that may not be.
So one of the things I see is important with the committee is, is a chair, do you, do you, would you agree?
Yeah. Yeah, but I think they need to select.
They need to select it, not us.
Yeah. And I also, I think, I think it's important to the steering committee is making sure they understand that we are gonna be looking for broad input from the city, you know, we've talked about doing a survey because basically just what you said. We, we wanna know from, we wanna hear from all the people that are not gonna come to a meeting. But if they're home, they'll take a survey and tell us what they do think's important, and that's, that's more, that's more realistic feedback, these are getting, you're hearing from a diverse group. So the steering committee needs to listen to that, we need to explain to them that this is feedback that's really important and we need to weigh it really heavily, we don't wanna that be a bunch of special interests on the steering.
Yeah.
I mean, we have a, we have a couple of things that are already in place, I mean, we have a, on, on streetscape, we have a Fort Union Boulevard master plan that. Covers that area specifically with goals and, and so I think that's a good place to, to, to start, that was, there was a lot of citizen input on that. And I think they came up with some really good ideas. But yeah, like I say, my, my, my biggest one is I wanna see those. I don't know, modular is not the right, but just something that says with different ideas. To kind of generate some of that input, so by the time we get around to a final design, people have already said. I like this one from this one, this one, this part, this part. You know, maybe people decide I, I'd rather have a little more narrower public space so we can have more restaurants, right? Maybe they say, you know what, back down, I want a great big place to sit down and do whatever, and, and you know, one or two is fine. Those types, but at least have those. Shown, so that the people that are, that live in the area, the people who live other parts in the city that are gonna be, you know, impacted by it. You know.
And I, I don't, we haven't talked through how to do this, but, but, but I would see a kind of design board. Where you can, you, you, someone that comes in late in the process or has been, been involved in the entire process will be able to see the dots. Woven together so that they can see that we are taking all of these things and, in a sense, compromising to get what's best for everybody.
To get that.
And that it's, that it's, that it's, there's a logical path and that will show that either online or through public meetings is there'll be a history.
You wanna open up a grocery store down there, the citizens apparently would love that.
And, you know, and another way to get to this, I think what we're talking about is visual preference surveys, we need to educate, hear all the possibilities. And then use those visual preference surveys, and we do that on the website, we can do it in our actual survey. I mean, we've, we've also done things where you have a mini survey every month or every, you know, 90 days or something, so you can test on these specific. Placemaking, you know, here's some, here's some visuals of placemaking throughout the country or the world, you know, tell us, give us your feedback on those. And it's another way to just get lots of impact and lots of.
Survey Monkey or statistic Y2K, Dan Jones types?
No, I don't, we don't have a Y2 or Dan Jo- or a Cicero, is now Dan Jones, but we don't have that money in the budget, but we can do Survey Monkey, we do a lot of Survey Monkeys.
So I mean, people who volunteer to come in and take the survey.
Yeah, so it's a, you know, it's, it's an opt-in survey, but you can look at the demographics and kind of. Figure out how to make it feel more representative.
I think more numerous mini surveys are more appealing to people. They get going on a survey and then they're into it seven minutes, and then they step away and they come back and they've been bumped out, I mean, people hate that, right?
Hillary, what about the, um, the planning supper we used for the Fair Park project? Yeah, social pinpoint, I mean, that might be something we wanna use here too. That it's got, you know, geographic, you can, you can leave notes on the maps and there's some things that you can do there that might be helpful too.
Yeah.
Put something controversial on there, you'll get a stack of dots.
Right. So let me ask you, oh, go ahead.
I was just gonna ask if there's gonna be a staff layer that we were working with regularly prior to reviewing things with the steering committee or how else you wanted to organize that as far as the city structure goes so that. So we're presenting ideas and working through that.
So we, we roughly outlined that in the draft document that we have, but. I would work with Mike and we would have, we would have staff involvement based on that. It would primarily be Mike's department and probably himself and others, but that's how I would see that, so.
I would see him, I'm not a steering committee, I don't know if that's been discussed. I think the goal in, in projects I've worked on on behalf of the city in the past is you have a, you have a staff project team that's. Providing technical data, providing shape files, providing background information. Kind of that in the weeds work that, that, that is, is a lot of data collection heavy and, and, you know, input in that regard, you use that to create a. You know, however you quantify it, a deliverable that you then take to your advisory committee and you get feedback on. Or numerous options of, hey, which ones of these things do you like, and here's. You know, option A comes from all these master plans that we've adopted, and option B comes from this survey we did as a community before the project, and option C comes from this thing. Here's some trade-offs, here's some, you know, pros and cons of each of these, what do you like, what do you not like, and then you take those and, you know, create something else and you keep iterating on it that way. And the staff involvement is at that, that level of, you know, trying to help create. You know. Manageable outputs that the steering committee can then look at, so it's, you know, they can see it, they can take it in, they know what it is, they can give feedback on.
Digest it.
Yeah, cause otherwise you're looking at thousands of data points that is really frankly overwhelming even to staff, but we have the time to sit and go through it and create something out of it.
So, so how do you envision council interaction? Is your expectation going to staff to, to then go to the council or, or, I mean, tell me, anyway, tell me what your thoughts are.
That was something that we were curious to see what your preference was on, to be honest.
I mean, you know, I think you, you would definitely wanna come to council during those phases that I mentioned, and that's part of the, that rhythm of the, of the outreach. But I think it's, you know, as many times as you want us to give you an update.
Yeah.
So, so we did Knutson Park with Holiday City, and they had a steering committee, it was, it was a much smaller group, like three or four, it wasn't much. It was just a park, so it wasn't, there wasn't, there wasn't the need of trying to get it to, to touch everybody. So we would have separate meetings and then once a month or once every other month, kind of depending on the, on the speed of the design. We would come and present to the council what we have been doing in the background, so you're being brought up to speed. Maybe there's approved items or we, we wanna present these three plans and, and present them in this meeting and say.
Right. Yeah, you said, and, and we would, I, I would like to see that, I'd like to see them coming to the council often, up, sometimes though in your, the contract or scope of work that you've done. Sometimes there's limitations on the amount of times that you come, but. My preference would be that you would be coming regularly to the council, I mean, I don't know if that's.
Yeah, no, I think, if, if possible, I think. You know, second thing is of every month, maybe that we just, now we have standing CDRA that we ask you to come, and if that's too much, we can.
And how, and what would be your interaction with the citizen advisory committee? Would you ever? I mean, I, I was thinking that, that they would be able to bounce ideas or, or have your kind of consultative. Assistance. Or, you know, I just wanna make sure I'm not imagining this incorrectly.
I think to help them be more engaged, if they were a part of the process, they'll have more ownership as opposed to them just being assigned to do some things, so I think if we. Had our meetings with you all, went through, these are the four or six ideas that were kind of like a high-level draft. And as we start to filter that down and get into more detail, at each one of those iterations, based on the feedback we're getting from the public input process. Then we can start to refine those, make sure that you are all on board with the direction before it goes into that next layer of.
Are you, are you asking if we're facilitating, are we, are you asking, are we, is this team gonna facilitate the advisory committee?
I think so, or.
Yeah, I mean, usually the planning team, we do that together.
Okay, I'd say I'd probably lean more towards that, and then, I mean, if we needed a short. Update, we can get it to whoever, whoever staff has been, but definitely be, when we're going to do something that's going to the public. That, those three phases, that's where we come and say, this is what we're looking to present and why, and then we can say. Yeah, or Ferris wheel just doesn't.
No Ferris wheel?
Just doesn't quite what we envisioned.
That's them sticking down to.
And then, and then, well, maybe it's a gun. Who's got the hundred million dollars?
No, I mean, but that's. You know, we'll, I think when we come back with our scope for, we, what we're going to give you is a detailed scope for the public engagement. I'm going to consider all the things that are important to you and then we'll, um, we're going to readjust our hours to make sure that, that. We're doing, we're taking, we're implementing the things you'd let us do. And I think facilitating a stakeholder group is. Really important. But I keep calling it something different.
I think our lawyer, our city lawyer suggested if we called advisory versus steering.
That's correct. Because you don't want to, I mean, you're not empowering them to make decisions. You're asking, the purpose of the group is to ask them to go out to their communities and bring information back. And to also be educated on the issues we're going to be discussing. Those are really the two things we're asking them to do. And we can help educate them. I mean, we've done some things for the, like Echoes Theater, we um had a forum where we brought in. Speakers from other projects around the country and we invited the public. And it was great because the public could hear, you know, about the, how this performing arts center had worked in Nashville or worked in, they're all ends, I remember. Nashville, well, the other end. But anyway, there was weird, they're all ends, not intentionally. But it was really helpful to both the steering committee and the public to get a sense for, here's some of the things that are happening and and what's working, what's not working.
So can I, can I?
Yes, clarify some, just for my understanding. Thinking about this process and once an advisory committee is selected and they're working closely with you. As consultants and staff and and doing the work, getting the input, bouncing ideas. And then as things are starting to formulate, then there's check-ins with the CDRA board or city council. Check in um and especially at critical points as you're moving out to public issues. And then back to work with the advisory committee with, with the consultants, with staff, working and check-ins.
Yep. And we can show you on a timeline how that information flows.
Okay.
Yeah.
And how that would relate to key milestone meetings or events or however, whatever we needed to organize it or.
It's like a helix, if you think about it. It's, you know, it's kind of taking input and spinning it back out along the way. Is that the right word, a helix?
Mayor, I think just from staff's perspective, this is a very multidisciplinary team. I think it might be beneficial for the council that wasn't in the selection process to quickly go through.
Oh, yeah.
At least who everyone here is and and what their role is in the project.
Cause I've been asking him.
Or we can touch on Science Bank and and sign and. So we have all these, these different uh sub consultants as part of this group. And if you look at the budget breakout, everyone's pretty even.
Yeah.
Because it's a, it's a mixed-use town center project. There's a lot of different things we need to, to put in to get what we want out of it. So I think the, the structure of the team is really good, but I think it might be beneficial to.
And introduce kind of what the role, what your.
Matt, Matt, you're the need to know only bit.
Well, it sounds like I need to know.
I'm gonna start over there.
Sure. So my, my name's Chris Lund. Uh, I'll, I'll be the principal over architecture. And CJ, who is uh also out of town today, um will be kind of the hands-on uh working up master planning. On the design side. So I'll, I'll be working with, with making sure the design, the buildings, volumes. Uh, correspond with the engineering and the landscape design. And then I've got Tanner that will make sure I stay. In line.
Your background, tell me about your background.
So, Tom.
About your background.
So, so N W L Architects is uh started in nineteen fifty-six. Uh, I've been a principal since two thousand and one. Uh, we do a lot of K two twelve uh educational buildings, public ed buildings. We do a lot of building of temple work around the world. Uh, we do city work, city, city buildings, parks, office buildings. Love, love all kinds of design. So it's, it's been strictly an architectural business with interior design. Very cool. And then we've been a lot with M G B and A and these developers. On a lot of our projects. So we've, we, as a team, we've got. A lot of twenty years, twenty-five years of history together on various projects. Perfect.
And then M G B A landscape architecture, um Leonard Grassley was the founding partner in the early eighties. And then Jay bought into the firm in the two thousands as well. And so, and I've been here since two thousand and five. Um, working on things, grew up in the North Ogden area and I've just been kind of obsessed with planning and landscape architecture for as long as I can remember.
Jeff Beck, I'm um in real estate development. And like Chris said, we're with these guys, projects and think. Both Alan and I are excited to sort of break some world, real world perspective to some of it. I think sometimes planners can go. Amazingly crazy and it's nice to sort of have a gut check on what actually works. And I'm, I'm, I'm really interested in placemaking, part of organizations that focus, sort of ground placemaking.
Um, I'm Alan Clemens. Uh, as Jeff said, we've worked together. Um, as developers and and other projects together with this team. Um, we, we're not just developers that, you know, are worried about a. How do we get our kind of toe in the door here? Like we, we really, I think, like Jeff said. And we can bring experience. We, we hold a like, like licensed general contractors. We're also licensed brokers. So we have brokerage data we can bring to the table, with cost data we can bring to the table from our construction background. And then from marketer and development standpoint, from piece of building study and analysis, build, bring that to the table. But I think the thing what we want to bring to the table the most is like Jeff said is. You know, we, you have a unique opportunity in this part of the valley is. And you're a community, but you're also at the base of, you know, greatest snow on earth. So. Um, you have a unique opportunity where some communities couldn't create a space. Where many people could visit, including the community. Um, between your backdrop and access to skiing and everything else. I think you have a real opportunity to create a place where people could view it from all of the world as, as an opportunity. To create this placemaking opportunity, right? So anyway, pretty unique situation.
Yeah.
Good plug on them. Alan, Alan's built the two office buildings that I designed for our firm. He's built. Jeff and I own that building together and other, and other projects. So these, these are guys that I. No, I guess my point is I, I trust them with my personal things uh and and business alike. And they both are very concerned, not just about the dollar, but about what the place looks like and what that legacy. So that's.
In the presentation that I'd, I'd love Jeff say was he's fascinated with town square gathering places. So, you know, that's as big a deal to be in this, in this project as anything. So I'm, I'm excited.
That's another education component will want to, you know, transfer that knowledge to this. Uh, advisory committee and the public help understand there needs to be an economic aspect to this. It's, it's got to work.
Yeah, that's a reality.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and I think one thing that I've been studying placement, I'm heading to Arkansas in October to see a bunch of towns. Town centers and.
I might need to come with you.
Yeah, I, I may need to invite you.
The mountain bike capital.
I don't know. I don't, I don't know if we're going mountain, but I, I, I don't know the towns we're going to. They're all very. But you know, the thing, the thing that's, um, people don't know what feels right until they experience it. I think that the big task here is when we've grown up in an auto-centric community. And you think about what place, so a lot of people have a stigma of what placemaking is, which is it's urban, it brings cars, it brings traffic. It ruins my, my view of the world. And so I think education is really, really important on, on. You know, there's lots to say on how people feel when they're in placemaking environments. And we just don't have a lot of placemaking environments for people who didn't understand what that is. And so I, I think that is going to be a job of this team is. How to educate them.
That's well said. I mean, people are, you know, on this Wasatch front are accustomed to driving somewhere. Getting out of their vehicle, walking through a lot of asphalt, buying a cert, doing a cert, getting it. And then they have it. And the only thing they can really do is go back to their car, get in their car and drive away. And.
Yeah.
I think many of us are so excited to think that in Cotwood Heights, we're going to get away from this strip mall. You know, just park, walk in and then get back and then go into your driveway and get it and go home. You know, like how do we build communities? So it's exciting to think.
Do you think we have enough examples in the county that we could take the advisory committee on a bus and visit a couple? Even are there even two or three that you would? No, okay.
I mean, nothing, nothing really, I, I don't know. I mean, Holiday has done, they, I think they've done a better job than those, but it still hasn't created. A space where people just go hang out.
Yeah. Daybreak, pleasure.
Daybreak is probably closer.
What about Mill Creek Common or Battleford? No?
I don't know about Mill Creek. Battlefield's probably a little more.
I mean, I, I raised my family in Battlefield and it's interesting you were talking about the skate park. I'm all aware of this one. It's kind of crazy, but um, yeah, I think, again, I think frankly, this is my opinion. For what you have the possibility to do, you're, so you should sell short if you did anything to the.
What about in Park City? It'd be even might be neat to, to say, you know, we're gonna do something and and let the public who, you know, look, put it in the newsletter and say. You know, on Friday and Saturday, we're gonna meet up in the southwest parking garage. And we're gonna see what it feels like to walk a real mean street. I, you know, I completely agree. It's experiential. Yes, the way forward, yeah.
So no pressure, but as far as the lands- landscape design, the architectural design, the development, it has to be perfect. So, uh.
We have one more introduction.
So Lindsay Ferrari, Will Benson Ferrari and Company. Um, and I'm with Hillary Robertson, who's our uh project manager for us. And it's been with us about ten years. So we started thirty years ago as a, a public relations firm. But within about five or seven years, we started gravitate to, to public projects, which required a ton of public engagement and public information. So, and we've really gotten, even I bet we're probably seventy percent public engagement now. And then the thing that makes us different than other firms is we do have that communications um origin. So we understand the importance of educating first, helping people understand the vision of a project. You have to start there before you start asking for input. Um, and, and that's really our approach is to, and to make sure we get broad and representative feedback. We don't want, we don't want to, uh, I mean, my job is to bring public input to this team in a way that's meaningful and usable. And it can't be just, you know, some special interest in a few people. Um, some of the projects we've worked on, Salt Lake International Airport, I mentioned Echoes Theater. Uh, we've worked on Daybreak, the original Daybreak, um. Park City Arts and Culture District, which is still in process. It kind of got waylaid by COVID a little bit. But um, a lot of, a lot of good planning went into that. And then we're working, Hillary's working on Allen Park for Salt Lake City right now, which is a. Strange place.
Awesome. So council, any other things that you wanted to bring up or CDRA board members, I mean?
Can, can I just bring?
Yeah.
One thing up. So possibly at our next meeting, the council, uh, CDRA board is. Okay, it would be really good to start honing in on and trying to finalize the advisory committee. How, and, and the information that you're going to provide is important to define that. But also the parameters document, that there's things that you see in that that need to be modified. I think that would be a good.
Okay.
I think that's kind of a big important step is to get that moving or getting in place.
So I mean, I think we'll have names for the advisory committee within a week, probably, right?
So do you want to see our scope first? So you kind of get it?
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah.
Here are the kinds of people we're looking for and the kind of input we're going to want. Okay.
Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And yeah, this is unbelievably exciting for me and I know all of you as a council, so thank you, appreciate that. Okay. Um, item three on our agenda is listed as a Hillside Plaza leasing discussion. And uh, I'll have Mike talk about this a little bit more as well. This is, this is really in relation to if we have any interest as a CDRA board in. Um, looking out or accepting requests for um leasing space. During the, before we get going into that for, for redevelopment mode. So Mike, I'll turn that time over to you.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I'm joining the Zoom so I can show a map of the spaces that are vacant in there. But um, council member Varell and Noel um were onsite last week. Um, and we did a kind of a walkthrough of some of the, not the larger vacant spaces, the reams, the ride aid. But some of the smaller vacant spaces in that um central plaza courtyard area. Um, just kind of walk through, some of them are, um, you know, structurally look to be relatively intact, if not dated. I mean, there's some spaces in there that probably haven't been occupied since we were a city. Um, you know, it just were never leased out. Some were restaurants, some were lower impact uses like. Um, you know, little office spaces or things like that. So they're in varying states um and, and conditions right now. When we were doing due diligence for the plaza, we didn't, we didn't do the level of due diligence that we would have done. If, if the intention was to leave the strip mall there and continue leasing space. So while the bones of some of the, the spaces may be good, I don't know what the, the condition of utilities, uh, you know, water, sewer. Power, electric, you know, anything like that is in those spaces. Um, you know, the roof condition is unknown above them. Those things would all need to be assessed. Um, and where we kind of the, the intention is to get through the master plan process as quickly as possible and get into redevelopment. Um, you know, a- as soon as we can. Um, entertaining any lease on the site would likely be a, maybe a year to year thing. I, I don't know that we'd recommend going beyond a, a year to year type lease um situation. We have been contacted, uh, really the day we closed, the, the phone started ringing, but only for people interested in the large spaces. Uh, your, your Halloween stores, uh, you know, paintball type use, uh, uh, you know, an industrial furniture sale kind of company. They all reached out. They all want the larger spaces, but they want space that's ready to go, that's in condition, that's loosable. The large spaces more than any are not. There's insulation falling out of the ceiling and a lot of damage and, you know. Grocery equipment still in the, the old grocery store. Um, so when we bought the property, did the due diligence, there, there was never um the analysis done of whether we should consider leasing the spaces. We, there's just information we don't have. Um, but enough questions have been asked and enough interest has been generated that we thought it'd be worth bringing to the, the agency. To see if there's, um, you know, I think the next step, if there was direction given, would be to engage in a, a property broker to see. Hey, what kind of businesses would even be interested in relocating to this site for a year? Some concerns. Not as an, outwardly that even if the, the bones of a space are good, there's still going to be some remodel, renovation costs, paint. And then whatever equipment any business is going to need to go in there, they may not want to sign your, a year to year lease with that investment required. Um, we would need to look at the tax implications right now because it's owned by a public entity. Any parcel that is not occupied by a private use does not have to pay property taxes. If tenants start occupying spaces that currently are, are non-tax, then that suddenly that whole parcel becomes taxable. Um, so we need to, to weigh the cost and benefit of what the tax payment would be versus what the rent payment would be. Um, and then we look at things, you know, there's been some discussion of sharing uses, using part, a part of the parking lot for. Park and ride or ski traffic or, or something like that, which is definitely doable. There's a sea of parking there. It adds, um, you know, some winter maintenance costs of, of snow removal across the whole site when, you know, maybe we didn't. If, if it's not used for that, you don't have to remove snow, which is all things that can be discovered and quantified and looked into. Um, if the council or the agency is very serious about leasing, we'd also want to go through with a contractor. And try to assess the current condition of those leased spaces. And I'm sure getting, uh, you know, tenants in that I think the, the city would want in there. There'd be some back and forth on um maintenance and repairs of those spaces to get them to a loable state, especially on the year to year lease. So I think there may be some challenges in, in attracting the type of businesses we want there in short term, but. I don't have all that information yet and I'm not a, a, you know, leasing, commercial, real estate expert. So we brought this with the agency to discuss and and kind of turn it back over to you.
Yeah. Council, tell me what your thoughts are. I, I don't mind the parking lot. I think um parking right, if we could generate some income. In the parking lot for, you know, people who want to park. Uh, resorts, employees or, I know we kind of did that last year, right? During the season. Allowed or our DPI did, we just sell. So uh, I don't know what my appetite would be to uh spend money. To, to get it up to uh, to then try to lease and, and then you're beginning timeframes that are difficult. So I don't know, tell me.
I don't know if I'd sink investment into it to do something that's temporary. I don't, I don't see that as a smart financial decision. But if there are ways to use it where we don't have to. Smart financial decision, but if there are ways to use it where we don't have to sink some costs and it's a. Increase for the city financially. I wouldn't be opposed to those things as long as it's safe, of course. I don't know what the condition of those buildings are, to be honest.
Well, when we walked through them, we did not, uh, I did not see, uh, remnants, uh, on the floor or in other ways that would. Say there were, you know, major water or, or damage problems. I mean, I was looking for that. There would have been some sort of debris or something and I, I didn't see it. I don't know how.
There was signs, there were signs of leakage and I know that two larger buildings, that was one of the issues.
Well, no, I'm not talking, I'm talking about smaller.
Yeah, I saw some there on some of the panels and things. I could see where it leaked through and. It probably didn't continue if the water was turned off. We can tell that the water, well, I guess the water was on the one running toilet. The, the one we, it's not running now.
Oh, yeah.
Catch it, but, um. I have a, I have a lot of concern about getting into lease agreements because, I mean, the maintenance costs, the, uh. The burden it puts on staff here is, is really a concern. I, I just don't see how that would work. And I, I think it's okay being a part of the parking lot. Um, I just think about the security concerns around the parking lot too. Um, if that's something we decide to do. But, um, other than that, I just have a hard time in looking at the leases, being a former landlord. I know the pain. And they can present, so I wouldn't want to put that burden on staff.
For Breckin?
I've just been on the negotiating a lease for the city. Space and that's. Fortunately, there are people who knew what they were doing, but it was, that was, that was a kind of work. I absolutely understand the burden that. Me comes for doing it.
Um, yeah.
As, as far as parking lot, um, I think you're kind of probably would be restricted to the middle area. The east side is where people current, businesses currently are running. So you need to, you know, talk, chalk that up. I. D P I was actually getting money from people to park there last year.
Resorts allowed their employees to park there.
And then like get in a van and go up. Okay. Well, I mean, that's not a problem. That's a.
We could generate, I mean, I'd be okay with something like that.
We'd have a whole lot.
Well, I, you know, the, the way that the little U shape is, so that would be to the west of the reams. Uh, old Ream store. Um, it still has very nice landscaping. It's clean. It's tidy. It has tables and. Uh, it occurred to me that if people, uh, especially if we're trying to solve our, or, you know. Mitigate our problems in the winter time with peak, uh, times if. I should say peak hours. Um, you know, if, if U dot really does bring along their U dot. Canyons com, uh, you know, their website and their Instagram and Facebook to where they are describing. You know, Big Cotton Canyon closed. Uh, you know, twenty-three hundred east Fort Union Boulevard, parking available. Um, and if, if, if any of that space was used maybe for, um. Cocoa and coffee and Danish and. I mean, the idea is that we have cars that stack up on our roadways and if we could steer them to a place where there were. They could get a cup of hot coffee. My, my concern is that the providers for that. Are across Fort Union Boulevard, which is four lanes of fast-moving traffic. So if people parked their car and said, oh yeah, we'll wait here for bigger Little Cotton Canyon to open. Let's go over to Beans and Brew or let's go over to whatever it is Einstein, whatever it is there, you know. So then they're running across because I don't think they would be willing to walk all the way to the intersection and then walk back. To get to those places. I mean, those are some of the dynamics that I wondered if. You know, we could see a way to.
So, so I, I, I mean, I like the thought process. I don't know if that would be feasible to do. Something like that in the next, you, you know.
I'm not saying Cotwood Heights, but I mean, if there was a private provider, believe me, I'm not saying that we would take that on. But if there was an entrepreneur who said, oh yeah, I see some potential to make money on those. You know, during the winter time on those peak hour times. I, I, I.
It's a luxury service. Basically you, you, you get a little thing, you have a. It's tempting, you have a, uh, you have a nice donut, coffee, and then you get in a van and you drift up into the resort. And then they bring you back at the end of the day, give you a cup of coffee and so you're gone.
Yeah.
If there were things that could be used in the parking lot, if someone had a coffee food truck that wanted to, I wouldn't be opposed to those things. But the impact would be to traffic and all that stuff. I'll leave that to the smarter people, um, and, and, and security concerns, but. I mean, it's space that's there and if people want to take a stab at doing something out, I would not be in favor of doing things in the actual structures. That's just my two cents. A lot of times with the structures beyond, when, when you bring a new use into a building, there's building code requirements that kick in.
That's the city of those guys.
Yeah, meaning that, that they have to adhere to the standards. For example, if you're putting in, in a re- a retailer or a food or a spot and it. And a lot of times a year, a year lease is not feasible for them if they're having to invest those amounts for.
But I mean, it's the idea of like it's ski traffic or something like that. If you set up. Maybe you could do a couple of things, but we've got minimal to a food truck that does that type of. You know, something that, that people are waiting to develop.
Well, I think that was, it's been an interesting discussion. So thank you. So item, our last item, uh, for this. Work session is, um, uh, item four, which is a canyon center park development. Discussion. And so the reason that we're gonna, I'm gonna have, uh, Mike talk about this again. The reason we're doing this is, uh. Um, simply to, to know if we're ready to, to start building, which I think we feasibly could be, or, or at least start the, the design and. The beginning stages of building the parks. Mike, I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't even take your.
No, that's okay. Yeah, this, um, you'll remember the, the developer of Canyon Center, Chris McCamus came to the board, a couple of meetings. Uh, is, is intending to proceed with a, an amendment to his development agreement. Um, primarily to extend the construction deadline for the, the office building. But in doing that, also changing the use of the office building to more of a, a mixed, um, office or retail with condominium units on it. Um, as part of what he's offering in exchange for an extension of the deadline is. Foregoing some of his collections of the tax increment until those buildings are completed. And also, um, deeding this park parcel, which is that yellow parcel there. Over to the city earlier than originally, um, was agreed upon in that agreement. So that the city could start mainly designing the, the future park and, and even using it if, if we get to that point. The only caveat that he presented, and I don't have any other detail on this yet, was he would need to retain usage of part of that parcel. And I believe it was. Somewhere back in this area for construction access. Um, for when this, um, this building is constructed. So. Understanding that all of that will still happen, the agency will still need to consider all that. I guess the question tonight is, is, is there, um. Interest in utilizing some of the increment that we've received so far to begin a design process. For that public park. Construct, we don't have the budget yet for construction. We won't have the full. Um, you know, clear ownership of that, that property for, for a number of years still, but we can begin the design process.
Do we have any idea on cost, Mike?
No, I don't.
So.
We can get a quota.
So when, if we, if, didn't he offer to deed it over sooner? But the thing that doesn't show up in this, uh, illustrator, this whatever diagram is that. Right now, this area here is a, is a very steep grade. I mean, i- if this diagram makes it look like this is, this area is usable space. I mean, this would take, from my recollection, unless you can show me a topography of this. This would take a lot of excavation and retaining walls and. Uh, and this is all unusual, unusable space. So what we're really talking about is a. Park area in here. Um, and I, I'm just wondering cost wise and design wise. Uh. We need to take into account and we need to understand what, when would this really be. A viable space and how much of this is really viable? I think. Do you, can you say, Mike, what, can you put the cursor around what would really be functional space?
You can't see the retaining wall. So, so there's a, it's, it's really large up, you know, at the intersection of Wasatch and Canyon Center. There's a retaining wall. So, you know, it's. I won't say it's flat, but it's at least flat enough that it doesn't need to be retained, you know, once you see the retaining wall end here. So, yeah, you're right. This is all very steep.
What's, what's the acreage on that?
On that little piece?
No, no, yeah, just give the yellow section.
The whole yellow parcel is one point one one.
So really. Is point seven acres really usable?
It's small, yeah.
And the other thing that I'm really concerned about and my, I, before I want to move ahead with the discussion here. Is to, can you put the cursor? Is that where the driveway? Okay, so. The residents of this area have had a lot of problems with their trash cans trying to control. The parking, uh, it's just really a nightmare around here. And that's, that's where right across the street McCandless wants to have his trucks entering and staging. And I, I think originally, if he had been able to keep his timeline, his trucks would, would not. Be trying to enter right across from the weekly townhomes, a skinny little entrance that. Arguably, this doesn't have adequate, uh, space in here. And so. I don't, I don't feel like.
So I, I think the question, that all has to be decided. That's part of it, what he's negotiating with the board as part of his development agreement. Regardless, at the end of all of this, the city will have this one point one one acre parcel. We can start. Doing park program designing now.
For whether we have access to it all.
Just the design.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it would be a design process because that, the parcel is what it is. That's, that's what we're getting. These are valid concerns that I think.
What he's asking for is the park we're not going to actually be able to use much anyways. And looks like that turn, I mean, the turnaround is going to be not part of.
I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't build the park until he doesn't need that access anymore.
Easily not. And I, and I do agree with council member Varell. There's a lot of questions to be asked. He, you know, kind of pointed out things on a, on an aerial image. Last time he presented, he would need to get much more clear on that.
Plus, we're, we're still a few years away from having enough tax increment collected to develop. This would allow us just to get a head start on designing and getting the park into a place where. We're comfortable with future development after some input processes and, and then, uh, we're ready to go once we have the increment.
Who's to the designs, hire somebody to do a.
We would, yeah, we'd have to, it's probably not, you know, we, we just gauge, it, it's a small parcel, so I don't know that the cost would be astronomical. But it is an expenditure out of the C D R A budget.
Which we can get folks probably or.
Yeah, we'd have to reach out and, and get quotes. If, if it exceeds a certain amount, we go through an R F P process. I don't anticipate it would. That agreement would come.
Well, I, I, speaking on behalf of the residents that I've talked to, and I've talked to people that are in the living condos, townhomes. In this area, uh, throughout, and they are very anxious for this not to be just a big, tough dusty. So I think, I think politically it would be very nice for them to hear that some design work is moving along. So that as we can, as soon as we can build, we're gonna turn that place around and.
Everybody in favor of getting the design started?
I mean, yeah, design is not harmful anyway.
Okay. Yep, let's move forward.
Yeah, thank you. Awesome.
Okay, so real quickly, the, the, how we approve the minutes, minutes of the meeting will be approved through the following process. The agency's secretary promptly will circulate a draft copy of the minutes. The board members will then have three business days to provide any corrections. Proposed corrections to secretary. Secretary will then circulate a revised draft of the minutes to the board members. And the same review process will continue again until there are no corrections left. Uh, within the three gen business days review period. Word on that draft of the minutes will be deemed approved and becomes a final minutes of the meeting. Uh, could I get a motion to adjourn our, uh, C D R A meeting?
Motion to adjourn C D R A.
All in favor, say aye.